Okay, first of all, I'd like to welcome everybody here and we'll get started. Uh, ask everybody to stand and we'll kind of word the prayer later. Dear heavenly Father, again, we do thank you for another day of life, dear Lord, and just thank you for such a beautiful day. And, you know, we just pray that you just be with us and look over our county, look over our state, look over our nation, dear Lord. Be with the one in Ukraine, dear Lord, and just pray that you just have your hand upon them. You know, we just pray that you just be with us and help us to, uh, work together and, uh, whatever's done today would be, uh, bring glory to your name. Again, we just ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to your Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the lady readers, if you're waiting, we just had some vendor claim that didn't get put on the list last Tuesday in Empire. And then we got a budget transfer and then, uh, Matt wants to speak on the payroll fund and, uh... Then also a discussion on the monetary building renovation and then an update on the help you face to improve. So, first thing is approval, do we have a motion to approve of the vendor's claim list?
Approve the vendor's first.
It's a man, it's all right.
Amen, sir.
Okay, well, we'll come back to it. Approve the vendor's claim list, we have a motion.
Motion. There's a, there's a reason, well, there's a reason we just got these, these claims here just a few minutes ago.
What claims?
The claim to fix the boat on there, or there are reasons, remember, of course, just got a list of the claims a few minutes ago.
Okay, y'all leave it for Friday.
You got it ready Friday?
Oh, uh, Lord, I don't think we, you, you got them to get, just, did they get met?
Yeah, I think they were, what time did we get them done? I think yours didn't work out when I left, Friday evening.
Yeah, yeah. I thought you were talking about the gravel list, I just didn't hear too.
We didn't see.
No, you were working on, that's right, when I left Friday, y'all, uh, the pipe, we had to factor through the pipe law.
We, we, we just got here a few minutes ago, we're walking into court, one second.
Just getting a little bit of time was over.
Are y'all leaving or, uh, I'll be birthday, I'll be more time. Is this fifty-four thousand dollars of pipe that we put in, is this your last month?
No, that, the problem is, is that what Tim gave us, we can show you back here, look, this is what took so long. Trying to sift through all this, this goes all the way back to August, you know.
Oh, okay.
Since he, since he jerked in.
We don't see, we send no tickets or nothing, just this.
We had to warn him for sixty-nine hundred.
And act, actually, we never did get his exact total while he got, we were, walked down twelve-hundred dollars less than what he had totaled in.
Yes.
We're twelve-eighty-four, twenty-eight difference.
Yeah.
But he should be at about fifty-two thousand or something, right?
Yeah.
Uh, fifty-two something, I think it was, and we come up with, was that what it was?
Says fifty-four and about ninety-eight.
Okay, whatever it was, we couldn't come up with twelve, we were still twelve-hundred forty-seven dollars short. So, we put everything we had, so we'll pay them and then, then just have to look and see.
What?
What was the reason, something when he first, uh, started, they had it on, every ticket in the invoice on the road?
They had, uh, different system, and then they, what he told me is they come into their computer system, they started, and the old tickets that he had, they were lost and he can't give them to us, so he wrote all this down for us.
And we still, I still got a few, I say, I say it's on twenty, twenty-five pieces of pipe order, did we hang up, that has been...
We approve more fifty thousand, one, Chicago pipe, like, great relief.
Did you prove one hour? No, we didn't have it on the end of...
We didn't have it on the end yet.
Um, so, when we get some of it back, sir, she might...
I hope, right now, right, yeah, hopefully, right now, uh, right now, FEMA has to even clarify this, uh...
Probably won't get it.
No, the only thing that we won't get back for emergency that was completely washed out is Roman Fort and Barge Creek, both sites. That's five thousand dollars, we will get that back, I'm waiting on that payment right now.
But all these other pipe that got washed out in January and, well, both of them was two different times in January.
So, me and, me and Don, the damage that the judge reported...
It's over, we, and we, do I have...
What now?
Of damages, flooding.
Which one, March or January?
January.
January, they not said, but we will get approved in March.
Top like an MBR, like February, I mean, the...
Now, March, we are, but they didn't need the August time, it was for March, they want pictures of sites before the damage hit. Now, who has pictures of the right side of the road before your damage, before a flood hits? Like, I'm gonna know, but the nation's gonna take its spot out.
And then any other Freeman Ford, we've applied for it and been, uh...
That's over a hundred twenty-five years?
I don't know what was going on there, it looked like maybe we just gonna have to have the steel put in and... We can't wait much longer, that road going on. Then you've got the slip all the way from twenty-eighth down, if you're moving eighty-two people along.
These, these vendors has to be paid, so...
Jeff, can I get a stake there with that slip?
Slip from the state path, and it's all the way down, and we, we moved about as much as we can move without causing it to kick out. But then, even before you get to that slip, when you first turn off down twenty-eighth and head down, that road has probably dropped down a foot now. And Donny went over there when he was over there, he said he went back to Ford, if you go in the hill, he said he probably be going more with that Ford slip off. But the bad thing is, if that thing breaks off out, then, then we have got a, a major... Yeah, there are a lot of people living in there, and some got, uh, hip issues, and some elderly and...
Were you using the handle of a lot of the road?
Yeah, yeah, we had so many roads, and I still got so many roads to these. And everything, we put a pipe in, it's just about a mud, mud hole there, every pipe.
Have you got a lot of road that's still empty?
We got, we ain't got no road that's damn passable, but Bristle Creek down there, it's got about three or four places, and any that are just unreal and... Let's see, you've got no, uh, Cutchin, Clearport is bad over there. It's down where you can least see them all on paper, they ain't been down, but we still got a lot to do. Quick Sand Creek, I bear still ain't, ain't got it for cleaning the pipes or hot hole that road.
Been any gravel hobbled on Cutchin, Clearport?
Uh, Johnny turned it in, but I don't think, is either one of them, you know, uh, pretty...
I don't think I know.
They, they, uh, they ran out of gravel down there and just started crushing gravel with it, third or Friday.
Yeah, I've asked...
Safety hogger, or, or, as quickly they get around that.
I've asked for three years, I can show you on the phone, we get gravel on Chester Valley Road, and they ain't, they ain't received a gravel yet.
That's the road that we went over on fifth, yeah, don't, don't say that, y'all, when we, then, we went over our...
Chester Valley Road.
Is that the one?
Chester Valley Road.
Ain't that the one we got torn bent down and broke the light on?
No, if you get on the private drive, we did that, I thought that's the right inside.
Was that my Chester Valley Road there, did you do it?
Road by, one, one way is December Smith's driveway, the next is Chester Valley Road, there's no gravel.
But they fixed every bit of it, you said he went down the wrong flat, you had been, you're an actual, you remember to keep it clean.
You had a gravel put on it, you've been judged, number one. I've got, I, I...
I want to do it, but I don't...
Two thousand nineteen, I heard it in.
The only thing I'd like to do with the building...
I'm saying, I mean, I, I mean, all of a sudden, Jeff, you...
Roy Oakley made a motion to pay the vendor's claim, did you understand?
You neglected.
What are you talking about?
You neglected these, these roads for three and a half years, now, two months out of the next time, you, you all were a big rush. You gonna break the candy trying to do it, but, you know, why?
Uh, you're a master, you aren't gonna change, sit down there and not hire a road company and say something like that.
I'm turning my road.
Hey, let's go on, we got a motion on the board to pay vendor's claim, we have to be honest there. This ain't anything to do with this, this is official meeting.
If this a meeting or what, I mean...
I'm gonna have to send it to motion, Donnie Bush.
Aye.
Roy Oakley?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Ellis Tanger?
Aye.
Consider, uh, approval of the make, regular minutes for February twenty-two, twenty-two. And the reason we need those minutes approved is, uh, the copperhead road, uh, we're as far as we can go, we need them approved so we can fit a comprehensive in the craft, uh, for them to look forward to get a county road number.
These, these minutes, these correct, some corrections made, Judge. But you well know, if we approve the minutes, it's, it reflects actions taken by the physical court, once that's recorded, that's what we go by. First, there's a bunch of add-ons.
Why, why, why do you want to change the minutes?
There's a bunch of add-ons that was added on to the agenda, and there's no list of it that was added on to the agenda. Actually, anytime that you well know that you add to an agenda, it must be voted on, but that didn't happen. Uh, there's, there's just a few things, it's like the audit claims, the figures on that, they went into the minutes. And I can read them off, you want me to?
Yeah, they need to add to the minute, we need to go ahead and get them already given approved, so we can get, uh, fifteen peoples on help, they can't even get in now. Hold on, I haven't even got the copy of that made quick, ladies.
Can you run it, we're good.
Hello, how you doing?
How you doing?
How are you doing?
Good.
I'm sure I saw the doctor's file. I said, gee, it's not good.
Yeah.
Well, one valve, you was up playing valve, I guess?
I didn't know this, I had that valves. That's why I was, that's why I was up tomorrow.
I'm sure, oh, them boys won that parade, you know, during.
They got about four, I like, yeah. If there's not any first game, pray second game, that's probably wolf or four years.
God. I'll be telling you.
Great, look, I can, great, great, better than celebrate.
On the... That's a good deal.
Okay, we're counting, correction, maybe made, which number there?
They said we had to add to the previous agenda before we can start it. One of them was, uh, discussion of broadband update. Number two, discussion of bridge fugue being paid, now, I'll pay for taxes, I'm just straight line item. Number three, uh, judicial claims was added to the claims list. Four...
What was number three?
Judicial claims added to the claims list. It's like they're listed, the actual claims list, I'm adding the, the minutes.
I didn't think we added any additional claims on there, did we? Yeah, we just played one along the page.
We had them, then we just...
I had you as well.
No, I didn't.
No, we didn't have none on.
You had, well, the video, what I watched, you had it, uh, send you that on there.
That's the incentive, that's not a vendor claim.
I didn't say vendor claim, so this claim, well, uh, okay, we'll just get back, uh...
Additional claim, is that, is it your incentive pay?
We had a great incentive pay. But, man, well, that claim is what it's all about.
Four, discussion, transfer forty thousand dollars in payroll fund. Uh, five, I like the budget amendment, two oh two two B eight double one was added.
What number was the amendment?
Two oh two two B eight zero zero one. Six, discussion of the chapter seven of the British Canadian Minnesota Code, which, which, uh, developed contracts with contractors who can... Uh, out of seven, number seven, discussion of the House Bill five twenty-four. Eight, discussion to start process of Gay Hard Lane, it bridge drive to the county road system.
Gay Hard and Nemec, my name.
Yeah. And number nine, discussion of two thousand twenty-two spring cleanup. Also, uh, number ten, uh, discussion of adopting Plum Creek and Boomer Lane to the county road system. There were some changes made in the audit claims, the reasonable total was eighty-three thousand five hundred eighty dollars and eighty-three cents. That was meant to, what we actually paid was forty-five thousand nine hundred forty-seven dollars and thirty cents for the clerks and clerk insurance audits. Uh, item twelve, recorded, you got a copy of there, I did not vote.
What was number twelve?
So, we vote on the claim list, but I did not vote. I have a discussion with the claim item, you can take a vote, so I need to vote.
On the national claim list?
Right.
Did it refer, did it, remember what you wanted?
Yeah, up at the beginning, I put it up here that Donnie had added on some, and I broke it down and explained all that.
But you didn't add it actually, if you weren't, if I didn't mean to say that these items were added to the actual...
Yes, if it was to...
And she don't have to say it was, uh, been, they ain't that...
Several third judge, oh, one magistrate, Bush, added several items to the agenda.
You didn't listen to, to individual items.
What they added, I heard.
They had to be, they had to be recorded correctly.
It might not have been done your way, but it's on there. Your way, my way, might be two different ways, but it's on there good.
Good.
So, you mean that your, y'all have them, they're already on the...
I emailed these to these guys, they had ample time to get back with me, so that we made special today for this. And I emailed these to each one of these magistrates and jail, so if there was a problem, they had plenty of time to get back with me, so we could work together to have this corrected, so I'm sorry.
But the only, the only thing about this thing, these are, these, it didn't refer in the minutes that these were additional claims.
Yeah, I, I added them right there, and they're on there just like, we can check them out, and I've got to take a look at it here. And I'm sure Cal will let you see it.
When you add items to a reasonable agenda, what he presented, you have to put in the minutes.
Well, why didn't you, why didn't you email me and tell me the problem was, and so it comes to this meeting?
And the correct procedure is to vote on the...
Okay, 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 here, uh...
It's, it's not...
I think all you want to do is, uh, record, we need to go ahead and get this meeting on with, uh, do we have a motion to accept? I want to leave off of this.
Took us another hour, yeah.
Uh, do, do we have a motion, go ahead and prove the record, February twenty-twenty-two minutes?
Motion.
I'll go ahead and stick to that motion, Roy Oakley?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
No.
Ellis Tanger?
No.
I vote aye also, motion carried. Consideration approval of budget transfer zero eight dash zero zero two.
Judge, it's two two, that.
Two two. The five of the senior, I voted aye, uh, Roy Oakley voted aye, Ray Moore voted aye. You just want to call the record, don't you? Consideration approval budget transfer zero eight dash zero zero two. And again, uh, all that Matt, let me read on that, but also this is, uh, part of the line item, but go ahead and there, Matt.
Yeah, there's only any that to, um, I just need to ask you all today. Well, you voted to move bridge fugue's pay from secretary to occupational tax administrator. Um, it would be easier if we just moved Empire rest of first salary for the rest of the year over, so completely from secretary to occupational tax. Or if we could do half, half, we could do fifty-fifty, um, it's up to you guys, how you want to do that. So, I left it off the list until I knew what you want to do with that. But besides that point, if you just look down real quick, uh, we had a few additional claims come in. Uh, the biggest one, obviously, was road maintenance contracting, that's listed, brought that, brought that into your vendor claims list. Down here towards the bottom, you notice what I did is, whatever money went over on the pipe, you know, it's pipe district one, two, and three, all three went over their monthly allowance, uh, yearly allowance on pipe. So, I took the money out of your bridge funds and moved into your pipe funds to cover those bills. The only problem I had was District Two, and I ended up with eight hundred sixty-five dollars fifty-one cents extra to have to transfer someone from somewhere else because District Two's actually having money across all three funds, gravel, pipe, and bridge. So, I took that from road supervisor salary. I did that, most of the money came out of there extra to cover the road maintenance contracting. Besides that, it was just little stuff.
That bridge money, is that, are you twenty bridge money?
Just the ten thousand a year we have allotted for bridges in the districts.
Just what Don, you...
Yes, I know, yeah, it's not the twenty one. No, every year, we get twenty-five thousand every district for gravel, twenty-five thousand for pipe, ten thousand for bridge. So, I moved it all, just moving around, kind of act like one pot, as we needed. Like I said, I need to know what you want to do on occupational tax administrator, and if you have any more questions on what I did to transfer the money.
Say, they could be defeated.
So, pay your half, should have two checks, pay your half, sec, uh, secretary and half occupational tax.
She's calling you down both positions.
Yeah.
Be all on these or just pay it out of one fund through the special officer through December?
It's needed way.
Which way is that, preview?
The easiest way is to do that all at one fund, it just keeps us from ever having to check some different, different withdrawals and splitting healthcare and all that good stuff. So, the easiest way to do it.
Okay, Roy Oakley's made a motion to accept a vendor's claim, I mean, the, the budget transfer, but on, uh, occupational tax officer just paid one fund to the public.
Second.
Sam Moore?
Aye.
Ellis Tanger?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Roy Oakley? Okay, discussion of payroll fund, this is something of a, that, uh, I guess after last court, we, the lights which went on and it was on our payroll, so we want to listen to collaborate on that, Matt.
Yeah, um, we knew there was a problem with payroll, uh, we didn't catch it very quickly because we actually had some money that was backpaid, uh, to the sheriff's department to kind of flush the account full, and we had much shake of money, so we just didn't know. Uh, what happened was, is back in August, yeah, in August, uh, we had some duty changes. You know, Crystal was doing the health insurance stuff, and then we moved the health insurance to bridge fugue and retirement to bridge banks. Yeah, yeah, so, we moved those duties over, and one of the duties for the health insurance was to print and report and transfer money from each account, General Road, jail, and so forth, each month to cover the health insurance costs. This is like twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars a month. Nobody remembered, we did it the first month in August, and then September, October, November, December, January, forgot to, just completely forgot. So, eighty-seven thousand dollars worth of health insurance, we had paid out of payroll and then never put it back in to cover those costs. That's why we end up in a negative balance. So, now, in your packet, if you notice, I just did print out of all of the bank accounts. And as of a few minutes ago, payroll has ninety-nine thousand seven hundred six dollars and thirty-six cents. And that's what out January's transfers to. So, it's gonna be about a hundred thousand dollars extra in payroll. So, we can actually pay us forty thousand back that we transferred in from last year. Remember last year, we had to transfer forty? We could actually transfer that back out to General if you wanted to, but I would say don't do that for now, but that is something that we need to...
That's what we transferred that into payroll and, and never put it back in to General.
Yeah, I just didn't catch it, I didn't think about it, because before, Roy, Crystal did, she did, like, she put it in vendor's numbers every month on the floor of meetings, and we just put five vendor's claims in there, and then she pretty much just handed it to me. I didn't have to think about it, she pretty much did the work in a year, and, so I didn't even think about it after the road changed.
Okay, anybody got any questions on that? And again, bottom line, he was writing payroll out of, I mean, the health insurance out of payroll, but he wasn't depositing from that fund back in to payroll to...
Well, I didn't, I wasn't done anyways, I didn't have reports to know how much to transfer.
It's paid ACH.
Yeah, it's paid ACH, it's paid, you know, on the web, but I didn't know how much per month to deposit back in, uh, those reports, I put myself, what did I write?
But since then, everything, everything is taken care of, uh, it probably will end up being an audit binding, but I mean, there never was any money missing, I know a lot of people, I've got a lot of case, how much money missing, never once was anything mentioned about any money missing.
No, that was, this is just in the wrong spot, this is in the wrong spot.
What about the comp time and the federal withhold? Did we discuss last week?
The federal withholdings, I still don't know about, uh...
Oh, on the, on the increase or...
On the, on the checks, we're just talking about, um, yeah, just doing other stuff, because I've been doing the primary, um, being bridge fugue, been doing primary all the work on setting the payroll system up, and it's just not done.
If somebody did say, you know, how come you ain't paying in federal, it ain't that we ain't paying, it is getting paid in, but...
It's, it's paid.
We're, I think we're way over...
We think it's low, yeah, we think it's low, um, but till, except for swamps, um, till we get the payroll system set up, we won't know.
Yeah.
And there's just the, how much taxes I have.
You're close on having that, you got a bunch, most information on that now, don't you?
Yeah.
Okay, no question, we'll move on. Consideration and approval to pay credit card bill?
Those are in your package as well, if you look, there's pretty much only, like, ten things total, ten things we got charged for. Uh, one of them is the quick books, that come off my credit card, that's the only come off mine. And then, uh, there's one, two, three, four, five, there's a couple, uh, nine things on JF, but if you don't notice, one, two, three, four, five, six. The majority of the money is for the hotel rooms for trainings, and then there's one charge for that, financial wireless. Uh, we may have paid it with credit cards instead of having to wait for the check to get there by mail. And that's about it.
Do you have a motion?
No, I'm sure.
Second.
Keep looking, what's your name?
Yeah.
Ellis, you second?
Yeah.
Ellis Tanger?
Aye.
Donnie Bush?
Aye.
Roy Oakley?
Aye.
Ray Moore?
Aye.
I don't see anybody in here, uh, on, on breadth of what they handled, but let me just kind of give enough, they, uh, they needed a couple of shares put in and a little bit of changes done on that building over, they'll be able to rent it. We got all the changes done and, uh, plumbing for a bit, uh, they had to add about two foot pipe the way I took it from the shares to where the zinc bases used to be in the wall. And they got approved, and then the building that picked her came over, and I just put a stop to everything they were doing. It's pretty much all done, it's, it just really almost walked in. But where the daycare, wherever the daycare, the kids could sleep there.
And you're there.
With the ambulance service...
They sit there here in the day.
Day, so with the ambulance service, they're gonna have beds in there for the workers, uh, none of that stuff needs to go. That's be all completely stripped out, ceiling cut out, fireproof, dry... Ceiling cut out, fireproof drywall on both sides run all the way up to the ceiling, I mean, the roof right there. And we've spent, what's the total we have spent?
Fifteen thousand some.
Fifteen thousand, four hundred and some dollars. I just don't see where we can afford to tear that out and fill another twenty, at least another twenty. Do it, the doors have to be shamed, that's how solid door versus panel door. I just feel if they're planning on still carrying on with that, that they would need to be responsible for getting the building up to code for them to sleep in.
If you talk to them.
Try to get hold of them, try to get a hold of you, get a hold of them either.
And get a hold of Jerry.
So, you know, where they hang in here, we can't do nothing, but.
We have another person that's interested.
Do one now.
We have another person that's interested.
Yeah. Have, have, and again, I just hooked you off, but I mean, we do have another person that showed the interest in that building and he said he would take it over for the same amount they would want to pay in, do all the renovation work himself.
What, what, what actually happened was there was no legal blueprint drawn up on the building to renovate in the first place. That's why it was shut down. It didn't, it wasn't, they wouldn't, legal blueprint drawn up to renovate the building according to the standard of the ambulance service.
I know, I know Brendan put it all together, but we was going to wait just till he got finished before he offer out a contract, but only for them to pay for it.
Because of that, because of that, fifteen thousand dollars is a way, way.
Yeah, without, without the other one takes it over and they need any shares and stuff they need, I don't know. When, when, when the state got involved about blueprints and all that stuff, that's when I just told them that nobody was occupying it. We wouldn't carry through with that until the court, because that's what we want to do on that. I should have brought this up in the last meeting, but again, I forgot, I can't remember it all.
So did, did the state shut it down or did you shut it down?
The state came in and wanted, well, they came in and told them what they had to do. It has to be far different kind of drywall, far proof drywall.
They told, they told them what.
The ceiling, yeah, told them what they had to do, yeah.
They wanted us to back up, they wanted to take, take it back off to the, they want engineering and architects coming in, do blueprints. And have plans in place.
Well, that's, that's pretty any commercial building then. Any commercial building.
Different standards for different things. They said the biggest kick was because.
They were going to be sleeping over there.
If those guys were just sleeping there, they need to kick them out at night, they can move in it, by now.
Contract has to be certified too, it has to have all the credentials to even start with the government building.
So it's, they said it was just certain things that they want to use the building for, that put it to a different bracket to make different standards.
And he says that just to tear the drywall down and get your friends to take care of it, he said to give around twenty thousand dollars at that, man?
I ain't heard no more than that.
Twenty thousand.
Just get it up to code for the ambulance service to use it. It's going to have, everything going to have to be redone, based on the bottom line.
So you are, uh, waiting to see if Bridge and Morphe is interested in carrying through with getting everything they need to get done and finish it at that price? I mean, I don't feel, I wonder if we can, the twenty thousand dollars and.
I believe I'd at least give them the opportunity to see if they want to spend that.
But what I'm saying, I just had somebody come to me that's interested and said they would completely, you know, finish the building and do what they wanted to do.
They kind of obligated the little person.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not saying just go ahead and turn it over to them. Again, I didn't know that, didn't get hold of them till we got rid of Charles meeting either. We just, we just, I just, I did put this up for Boulder today, I just wanted to discuss it and put it out there. Okay, update on LQ phase two and three. I'll kind of go over with what I've got here, but I, instead of me doing that, I'm going to go ahead and let either Jennifer or Paul one do this.
Let me talk about two and three and then you'll take us in. We were prepared for phase one, two, and three. Phase one was to put the water line up there, a little bit of money left over starting the campground, which we did. That was completed and done. As part of phase one, we had to acquire property and the property was acquired. As you go up the hill there, before you get to the cemetery, where you go up to the cemetery, on the right hand side, the county bought two and a half acres. And on the left hand side, they bought six point one acres. So you own them and be simple, those were in March of two thousand eighteen. We really struggled to get revelation code, you know, they were in bankruptcy and all kinds of issues. We had to get an easement to lay the water line up there to the tank. And finally, they leased it to you for a dollar a year, late in two thousand eighteen. So, you know, you've got that lease, it doesn't even have a term on the lease, it's just a lease. So I guess it goes forever, it's going to be a dollar a year. So, so we've got the property. On phase two, it was to finish out the campground, I mean, the RV park campgrounds and whatever money was left over, some cabins on the left inside of the road. And phase three was to put a welcome center on the right inside of the road. Jennifer can stop me, but she got what's called an AMLR grant from AML for one point three million for the campground. She got a half a million extra from ARC, so there's one point eight million, you know, with some spare change or I forget the exact number. But on that side of the road, on the other side of the road, the welcome center, so a little over seven hundred thousand dollar ARC grant. And so that's, both of those projects are a hundred percent fully funded. Now, the, the problem, the reason why we've been waiting for so long is when the ARCs were given, then they were given to RD, rural development, to administer. And that's kind of like, you know, it just goes into a quiet mire and RD is very, very slow. We're making progress now, but for a long time RD was giving all these ARCs to administer. And we've got some that they've had for two years and they haven't touched them. I mean, it's administratively, it's a real problem. But regardless, Jennifer's doing a real good job, we're working with her to slog through all of the things and I'm hopeful that, you know, this summer we'll be bidding projects out to finish out. We've got both the welcome center and the campground. So, and that's what we were hired to do, those two. There was subsequent procurements, we weren't hired to do those, so Jennifer can fill you in on those. I'll turn it over to her. I'm glad to have you, any questions?
So we do own enough property for phase one, two, and three.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a property, it's a property, we, yeah, well, we did, and y'all purchased in December of eighteen, I guess, looked like when the agreement was drawn up with them, but March of eighteen, after the sixth day of March, when John Lenzler, I guess, was in there, he was the one who acquired the property.
We were asked at that time by the fiscal corps, by John Lester, give more land. When I negotiated with, I did all the negotiations with everybody on this. And we went to, to Louise Howell and Janet Frank, they're the lady. They said, we'll sell you what you need for your first three phases and then use that and come back to us again. So we don't want to sell you a lot because we, we want to sell you just enough and that's what we bought. So their, their issue at that point, now, since that time, there's been a lot of movement on property up there. I'm not sure what's going on. But again, the next phases are not mine. I'm not involved in the property acquisition at this point there, so go ahead.
So what I put in front of you is your revelation easement, your phase two deed and your phase three deed. So that is your proof that you do own those properties. So like I said, phase two, phase three, you are secured. Phase one is complete, we have water, we have your sewer dump station already installed. We have your phase three power up there. Broadband was already up there, so we were good there. So all your utilities are already up there, they're just waiting for us to put in your facilities now. I have been in communication with RD. They've already given us some ideals of what they call a letter of condition. So they've already started us in collecting the items. Brendan gave me his letter of opinion on your deeds, so we're good there. The judge just signed the right away easement today. Paul had the engineering contract signed today. Those are the hardest items to get. So RD is moving on your project. So we are hoping to get a spring to summer bid on your project. So we will go to construction this year. You, you will break ground this year on your visitor center and your campground.
It's all good.
Yeah, so we're getting there.
In your bidding, Jennifer, how many acres do we need to complete the project?
Well, what I also put in front of you is.
We already got the property for phase two and three.
Phase two and three are secure, you, you have your property.
That's all we're discussing, that's all we're discussing.
So the rest of your phases is what I put in front of you. You know, we, at some point in time, these are what we have talked about building up there. If you look at it, I mean, at some point in time, you will have to build a wastewater treatment plant. And Paul can tell you, you're going to have to at least have a couple acres just for that. That expo center that you want to build, that is heavy. You're going to need probably five to ten acres alone and maybe even more for that expo center. When, when Ron spec'd that out, that is a forty thousand square foot building. You have a spec building sitting over there, you know how big that is. And that's just the building, that's not counting the barns, the holding facilities for the horses, anything. It is an agricultural expo center. You will be able to have concerts, but we're specing it for agricultural hits. You have commitments from Appalachian Horse Foundation, you have commitments from.
Is it a million dollars, what they didn't have, obligated or shifting? Is it one item?
When, when we, when Ron did your cost estimate, and that was two years ago, it was almost six million dollars. I'm going to tell you right now, you're going to have to add thirty to forty percent to that cost estimate because of the way your construction cost had went up. You're looking at about seventy, eighty million dollars to build that. But with everything that we had there, you're going to have a state of art expo center that's going to bring people in from all over the United States, probably even overseas. Because the way we have that set up, it will take advantage of this being the horse capital of, of the United States. Because that's what Kentucky is. But it's going to take advantage of that, you'll be able to have horse shows here, you'll be able to have track races here, concerts. It is an agricultural expo center. Anything you can imagine, you will be able to have niches here. What better place to have, you know, than a great country? But we got to have land. We have the store. People are going to need food, they're going to need gas. You know, if you look at these gas stations, you know, you're still going to need at least half an acre, an acre. That lodge, it needs to at least start out as a pretty bigger, but you need it to where it can expand. Because when that expo center comes, it needs to be able to expand to at least a hundred acres. And people are going to want to pull in it, they're going to want other aspects in that. You know, everything else that's here, you know, those additional cabins, let me tell you something. That sports flex over there, his cabins are ready to run. He can't keep them, he can do. Those cabins are high dollar dollars and he doesn't run them. So when you're looking at it, I'm telling you, eighty to a hundred acres to do everything you want to do here, that's what you need. If you want to do all these phases. Now, if you don't want to do them, that's fine with me, I'm at your mercy, I will do whatever you all tell me to do. That is my job to do what you tell me to do. I am your grandmother.
The next step, we want to see if we can purchase more land.
I know, I can't do anything until I have land to do it on. And that's where Ron's at right now. He can't even do what the master plan that we have money for right now until I have land to know where to do that master plan.
It's kind of a twist, catch twenty-two, Ellis. Because you don't have a grant, you're looking for an AMLR grant. But when they give it, the memorandum of agreement is usually a year away. So any money to pay for engineering or surveying or property, so somehow, this is where the catch twenty-two is, you got to have the land to know what you got to do, but you don't know what you got, what to do until you get the land. And you can't, the way the grants are written, you can't do it. Now, what we did in phase one, two, and three, JL told me do it, and I went out and did it. And I paid for it myself. Not the land, but all the engineering work on it. So, and I didn't recover it now. Now, you know, that was my issue and that's beside the point, but, you know, I'm not going to do it again. But, but the point is, you're going to have to have, somehow get somebody in there to negotiate the property, survey it, at least get an option to hold it. And then when the grant gets approved, the grant will pay for it once the grant gets approved. But all of the engineering work and surveying work on that front end work to define that option won't be able to be paid for on the grant. Now, that's where you get into this circular logic. And phase one, two, and three, we got it going.
And the other thing that we have to keep in mind too, is if you want the grant to pay for it, it has to be for market, for, for fair market value. You know, if it is above fair market value, the grant will not pay for it. So if that land to phases at five hundred dollars, that is all the grant will pay. If they ask for more than that, the grant will not pay for it.
Several hoops you got to jump through.
I think it's around eight hundred dollars, I think, what I had to go word on that reclaim property per acre. But again, again, too, it can kind of show me how slow this process is. Y'all acquired a property in eighteen and here it is, four year later and almost a month and, you know, we just now getting ready and hopefully we can beat it out this summer to do it.
Well, if, if the pandemic had hit, we lost a year there because RD shut down. You know, quite frankly, they, as a federal government, you know, the agency, they just kind of disappeared. So we've lost a year there and, and it should have already been under construction, no doubt about it. But, but also when you give ARC grants to RD, they can also give them to CDVG. And if they give it to CDVG, we enter, we enter construction act. So ARC is not a primary agency, so when they give you money, somebody else has to administer the funds. So AML is not allowed to administer those funds. So we, it has to be another federal agency, which could be ED, AC, VG, or RD. So they're giving a bunch of them to RD and it's really on top of the pandemic and everything else. They got, they got thrown thirty ARC grants out on the second day and they're having a hard time. You know, they've had people retire, like everybody at home and so on. But regardless, we're making progress now, but you're right, Judge, it should have, it should have happened a year and a half ago, we should have been under.
Yeah, this whole process been going on, like twelve years?
Man, we got involved in.
We've been working for a long time to get stuff developed.
Takes time.
Yeah, it's, it's frustrating.
But again, I do appreciate y'all taking time to come because, I mean, my phone then blowed up, your, your Julester grant money for LQ and, you know, and I mean, it's been crazy. I know we got one point three four four, three hundred forty-four thousand, four hundred through AML and then five hundred on ARC grant, that's what we signed, what, less than a month ago? And then with seven hundred and eight thousand, five hundred ARC grant for the visitor center, that's the same time, about a month ago, so.
So we paid two and a half million dollars.
I know it's amazing that so many people would, would be tickled to see Bridge and County Louis grant money and be happy for them, but I mean, that just.
The money is secured, the land is secured. These two phases will go forward. Like I said, we'll be under construction spring to, to summer for these two phases. It's everything else that we need to try to figure out.
I think, I think you actually stated that, Judge, at the last meeting, that we, here at the wins the grant.
Mm, well, I called you said there, so we're going to lose that grant, I told you we very well could. But I had never laid eyes on the deed until Paul actually took time to come up here and ran me a copy of it. And, but I was surprised that y'all didn't remember doing that in eighteen, purchasing the property. But I mean, it did what it did, but that, I just wanted him to come up to kind of give an update and let us know that we, if anybody wants to see it, I've got the plan, I'll have it in my office, of what we're going to do, the cabin sites, the campground sites, and then also a copy of the visitor center that's across the road. So if anybody, if anybody out there wants to come in, I'd be more glad to show it to them. And we'll continue to work to see if we can get more property to, I mean, continue to make this thing grow. And we have continued work to see if we can get more property, and I mean, continue with this thing growing.
And that's what I was gonna say, Judge, I know a couple of people made comments, this court should figure out how they can somehow get a toll and get some more property. And that's really the key, is to, you know, if somebody...
Let me ask you a question, would you be interested in negotiating that with them guys, James Franks and Jeffrey? I'm sure, you know, somebody needs to start doing that.
Yeah, but only thing is...
Them guys are willing to sell right now.
Only thing is, four, five, and six, phase four, five, and six has already been turned over to...
No, five and six are not. Five and six, we have an RFQ out, and we do need to select somebody for those. I have, I have those proposals, and we do need to select somebody for five and six. So, whenever you all are ready to do that, we need to do that. And we need to actually do that pretty quick, because the AML grant is due April first. So, I really do need to have cost estimates on five and six as quickly as possible. So, as soon as you all are ready to select somebody for five and six, which is your four and Paul.
So, phase four is the one that Johnson, what did first, uh...
Ron Johnson.
Johnson and Ron.
Best thing to do before, before the deadline, take orders, grab...
Yeah, I can't, I cannot submit until I have a cost estimate.
We need to do that, get that done before April.
Yes, I have to have the grant submitted April first, so I need a cost estimate ASAP in order to even know what to write in my grant. As soon as you all are ready to score those RFQs, I'm ready, I have them in hand. I just need you all to tell me when you want to do that.
Well, looks to me like this list, you've got your, after it gets to the number four, everything, you know, no security land. Look, maybe we might get somebody, try to get some property by that part before we can do any of that.
Me and the Johnson guy, we met about, it's been about six weeks ago, we rode up there. And actually, on the right hand, see everything that's in that grant application? He showed the property on the left that joined a campground site, under Flumery Plant, I guess.
That probably is no longer...
Louise Walk, Eva Walk, I guess, or whatever.
Walkers or something, yeah.
And that's where I was kind of thinking that this phase two and three was gonna be on that piece of property. I didn't realize that inside the campground and inside the, the welcome center was inside, that was phase three. I guess I'd kind of jumped down, but I actually thought four, five, and six was three projects together, but it's not like one, two, and three, but...
No, we can separate every project here. They don't have to be done as one big project. Every one of these can be done as each individual project.
Answer your question, Ellis, I think if the fiscal course panther out of their pocket, they can hire somebody to negotiate the property for them. That's not part of the project. So, I think, Jennifer, like if you said, we're gonna hire, you know, Ray Moore, I'm just being funny now, but if we, yeah. I'm not trying to insult you, Ray Moore, I say...
Get a little work in the morning.
But, but, you know, you could hire somebody and say, and you could go find it and get options on it and everything else. But it would come out of the fiscal course pocket, it could come out of the grant.
And then again, that's what me and Jennifer are talking about, we, she looked to look for grant money to try to purchase this. But if it's over fair market value, we can't even get a grant to own that.
You have to give it a price.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I have, like I say, I have about six weeks ago, me and Ron went up there, but I've also got another vision, even this week, if it works out, to talk to them about property, because Jennifer can tell me if we get sixty or eighty acres, whatever we could accumulate. And then, Tim Davis over there, Hydrosonic Garden, he wanted to buy every bit of that property at one time. And he said he's already invested over a million dollars, so I even thought they were gonna get with Tim. They didn't, Paul, they were gonna hydrosonic garden there, but it looks like they are. Looks like they purchased industrial building, first spec building, give it down payment to the industrial board, so...
Did they pay it down later?
Yeah, yeah, I told him to pay, pay ten thousand. He brought some different investors earlier, last, you know, week before last, I guess. And I was told that he'd pay ten thousand dollars down on it.
You think we maybe have to start a sensible share?
Well, I think we need to get a little bit more labor done and get, talk to the land owner first, before we hire anybody. But I mean, I mean, it's just something we, you know, have to, like I say, we'd have to get you to pray first and see which property we're gonna try to buy, which, which I will get the most acres on. Does anybody know how close Tim Davis' property comes to what we've got up there, Jennifer, do you know?
I have not seen his name.
On anything?
Those areas of...
This property, Judge?
Tim Davis.
But I don't know what he calls it, his firm, if it's another hydrosonic or an ionic or what.
I've not seen that on there either, Judge.
Well, there's a guy named Todd LaFleu.
That's, that's...
He owned the property.
Is he working for Jeff?
Yeah, he owned there pretty much.
He owned part of that too, they're in the company on that.
Yeah. I don't see that guy's name on here.
I have not seen him either. I think he has purchased that a lot of things throughout.
I don't know, I don't remember, some of his property that he thought they had, the most property building on, he's running up. I don't know who he stopped to own. And I don't really know how much property exactly that Howell and James Franks owns.
Some of their...
It's a really good chunk.
Then I know Louise owns everything on the left side.
Right side.
Beyond the campground.
He owns the right side. On the left side beyond ours, it still shows it as Louise Howell, but I heard she may have sold out too.
To the few.
Yeah, to the few, that's what we heard, even though the...
Todd, Todd LaFleu bought the property, the upper lower campground there too, before we checked in.
So, they kind of got you hemmed in.
That was back this side of the campground, right there, beyond him.
To mono...
On the left is what he bought.
Before you get to it. I don't know, Stephen Kenny, you were talking to Andrew Hudson Farm.
That's, that's back this side.
Well, LaFleu owns one, two, piece of property, where you do everything.
He told me he owned fifty percent of what James Franks and Jeffrey owned.
It looks like it, just looking at this...
Everything they own.
I think he owned it by itself on the left side, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I mean, to do the store, to here for to get is, you know, renting, you can get away from the main road, because you do it, you don't have to have access to it. The store really needs to be on the road, you know, the store and everything, so...
It needs to be about the interest of campground, really, how many, when they can't...
Get the property somehow. You know, it's too bad Revelation, you know, they're in bankruptcy, I think it's too bad. Couldn't get bankruptcy, Judge, so you'd sell that little point.
Yeah, I think, I think Durland joined the Howell property line, Revelation.
It does on that, yeah. It joins Durland, um... Well, James Franks has got fifty feet through there, he wouldn't sell us all the way to the property. He wanted fifty feet left, he said he didn't want the county to...
And then when I, when I, when I was talking to Jeff, how they wanted three hundred feet left between the properties, the visitor centers, to join the property, they wanted to sell, like where the pond is and where the, where the camp that...
Pond is half on Revelation and half on James Franks.
Now, that's the front on the west side, I don't know.
Right, it's on the right side.
Right, that's...
You go up the hill...
Was that, was that in Revelation then?
Some of it.
Oh.
Right, big ponds on the right hand side.
Yeah.
I always was told the road itself, Revelation on everything on that side, is that next to true then?
Revelation's got, like, you go past the property the county owns, other than that fifty foot strip, but that's another rule. And then Revelation busts up against that, and that road going up to the cemetery and everything is not on Revelation. And our tanks on Revelation, and we have that, that's what the lease is for.
For that lease, though.
But I'm not sure, I look at the lease, I'm not sure...
What we go here, yeah.
But it'd be nice, if you join that with your property, you know, there's some things you could do there. But again, Revelation, I've dealt with it for six months.
Are there any way to deal with Revelation and then win bankruptcy, you know?
Well, probably, you could probably find somebody that, that wants some money for bankruptcy case, but, you know, it's possible. I've, I've chased them for six months, and...
I've got, I've got a couple people I'm supposed to meet with, so maybe by the next court meeting, I can bring something forward. If not, maybe we can look at, seeing if Paul will be interested in that kind of purchasing property.
But anyway, your property's showing up on...
Okay, any more questions?
We need to move on that pretty quick, or there will be no property up there to get. And the longer we wait, the higher it's gonna get.
I think it's already, and that's gonna be, that's what's gonna be bad, or if it's over, whatever land, we have to come up with taxpayer money to purchase it. Okay, this time I say most of the during reading.
I'll say one.
Got any more? Boy, you're up there, stay there, pay attention.